Wow. Welcome to the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 13th, 2025. Meeting has now come to order. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Devois.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Lapour.
Here. Announcement of the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted at reorganization me, followed with the county clerk, and posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Commissioner Duffy?
Please draw me in. Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the God of our deepest longings and desires. Keep the flame of hope alive in our heart. Make us attentive to what is lacking in our personal lives and in the larger world. Give us a view of the future that sees not desolation, but possibility. Keep whispering in our hearts, a better world is possible. Give us the grace to partner with you, with Jesus and the Holy Spirit, and to help make that a better world and a wonderful reality. And we pray for that man that came from Chicago. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for remember the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of April 22nd, 2025. Bartlett, second by Duffy. Roll call. Moved by James.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lazara.
Epstein.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Approval of proclamation. Move it. Moved by Bartlett.
Second.
Second by Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. For everyone's notice, this proclamation honors and recognizes John Maylo as a guitarist as superintendent of Passaic County Technical Vocational Schools, who all deserve and he will be missed. Administrator's report.
Thank you, Director, and good evening. First, we have Sarah Hughes King and John Felice from the American Red Cross to give us a presentation on how we can better collaborate and serve Passaic County residents. So floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. My name is Sarah and this is John.
Hold on one second.
Well, I'll try that again. My name is Sarah, and this is John, and thank you so much for having us today. I want to first thank the county of Passaic because we have an incredible partnership with you all. And I just wanted to pull up some numbers, the responses that we've had over the past two and a half years. The Red Cross has responded 217 times to different disasters, and those could be anything from a home fire to anything from a flood. And we've helped almost 2,500 residents of Passaic County. And I think that really goes to show the incredible partnership that we have with the county and the Office of Emergency Management and all the fire departments that we work with. A big part of my job is to help educate on the services that the Red Cross responds to. A lot of people think the Red Cross will respond to bigger things like hurricanes, but 90% of what we respond to are single-family fires. So a lot of what we do is on a local level, and it's really important for us to get into these communities so that you know that. We are actually going to be in the city of Passaic on June 7th. We are installing free smoke alarms alongside the fire department. We are going to be in the city of Patterson alongside the fire department on May 31st too as well. So that is a service that we offer free to any of your residents. They can get smoke alarms installed by a group of our volunteers, and our staff will come out and install them. We were always looking for volunteers too as well, which is why I brought John, and I'm going to hand it over to him in a second. But our volunteers are the ones that are getting called at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning to respond to some of these fires and to help your residents with financial assistance, with emotional care, and everything like that. So thank you so much for having us, and I'm going to hand it over to John Felice. He's our community volunteer leader, and he is the one that faces our mission every day.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Passaic County is so much a part of my life. My dad grew up in Passaic, and my mom grew up in Patterson. So really, for me, it's like coming home. So thank you for having Sarah and I. I do a lot of things with the Red Cross as a volunteer. I drive the vehicles. We went up the forest, the wildfires up in Upper Greenwood Lake area, and I think I might even went into certain parts of Passaic County, but a lot of flooding over the last couple of years, as well as home fires and apartment fires. It's about providing comfort to the folks that are having the worst day of their life. And we're here to help not just in Patterson, Passaic, but in Wayne and all the towns in Passaic County. As a Bergen resident, I know that we live in a time where the demand for those kind of services at 2:00 in the morning are most important. And we're here to provide to alleviate and prevent human suffering. And whether it's a family or whether it's a community that's facing some kind of disaster, man-made or natural, that we're here for them. And we also do smoke alarm installations, irrespective of their ability to pay. I go to Ho-Ho Kids, I go to TNEC, I go to places in Passaic County as well. So we do that to prevent that situation from turning into a deadly situation. So we're here to offer also, we've talked to senior groups about being prepared, about having a list of phone numbers ready, so if you have to leave your house, you can call your son. I have that, because I don't know my kids' numbers, to be honest with you. A list of medications, and many times you're on multiple medications. Have that so when you're ready to leave your home, if there's a fire or a tree falls on your house, or there's a flood, it's very important that you do that. So we do that to communities all the time, as well as senior groups. And so Sarah and I partner in that in that respect. But we're here for each resident of Passaic County, and we're here to help them to alleviate and to prevent something from turning out to be a fire to something worse, or a flood to something worse. So as a former Commissioner in Bergen County, I know how hard it is to fund all the things that your constituents want. And we're here to provide. We're the largest volunteer organization in the world. And so we're here to assist in preventing that human suffering that we spoke about. So with things getting tighter in government, we can be that partner in providing those services to those individuals, to your fire departments, to your other community partners to assist in making their lives better. Sarah, you want to?
No, I think you give a great presentation. So thank you again for having us. We just want you to know that we are here. We are a local organization with very big national support, but we are here for the residents of Passaic County, and we're here for what we can do. So we're here if you have any questions. We brought some folders for you guys too, for some information too as well.
Thank you. I have one question. Do you get any federal funding? I know a lot of people donate to the American Red Cross, but do you get federal funding?
Yes, we do. We get a small grant from the Department of Defense that helps our service to the Armed Forces, but all of our humanitarian work too, that is all the work that we do when we respond to disasters. We don't get government funding for that.
I met someone who actually was on a base in Eastern Europe, at an Army base for six months. And she was like, you had the Army base, and you had this woman from the Red Cross. And in fact, my son's in a Marine Corps, and he met someone from the Red Cross in Japan at the base. So that's something that I didn't know until I got involved with the Red Cross. So it's interesting, the breadth and scope of what we do. We also do training for CPR and water safety. So we're very involved with that, as well as the blood side of our business, which is running blood drives and managing that part of the services that we do provide to the community.
And we do get some, I misspoke, we do get some smaller grants too through the NIH, through our biomed services too as well.
Director, I have a question. John and Sarah, the May 31st and June, I believe.
June 7th.
June 7th. Those two dates to provide the fire detectors in homes in Patterson, Passaic, do you have an existing list already? Or how do you get into these homes?
So that's a great question. So we partner with the fire department, and the fire department will put out messages that the Red Cross is coming, and they will identify portions of the neighborhoods that have had significant fires, and then we would try to target those areas. But if somebody in that town wants a free smoke alarm that day, they can go to our website and just fill out their address, and we have these things called strike teams that then would go install it there. So these two dates, they've already prepositioned, they've already identified neighborhoods for us to canvas and install, but anytime someone can go online, put in their address, their name, and then we would have a strike team. John is part of our strike team that goes out and installs.
Awesome.
We also provide for people that are hearing impaired, bed shakers. It's really very, very fascinating where we put our smoke alarms, we install, and then when it goes off, it triggers, it almost feels like a clock radio, and we put, there's a shaker that's connected, physically connected, between your mattresses. And all of a sudden, when that alarm starts, it effectuate the starting of that bed shaker, and it says, "Fire, fire," or in Spanish as well. And then it vibrates. So we've done a couple of them, and it's so rewarding. These people are like, "Oh, my gosh, this is so nice that I'm able to now be more secure knowing because I'm hearing impaired that they're able to, it's a safer..." Because it's two minutes. You have two minutes. When that smoke alarm goes off, you have two minutes to get out of your home. So we do that as well. So like I said, contact the Red Cross, but the more the community knows that we're coming, they'll be less reluctant to open the door. You know, they're concerned, even though we have Red Cross written, the hat and so forth. So just think of it, that person that has a smoke alarm in their home, to me, it's such an important thing to give them that extra time to get out safely.
Well, in a time of crisis and chaos, it's very comforting when you see it on TV, you see the Red Cross blankets, and you see all the volunteers, you know, shepherding everyone and bringing them to safety. I thank you for everything that you do, and we're a better, better country for it.
Well, thank you for having us today. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more thing, yeah. So next Tuesday, the county is launching Passaic County Move. It is our first piloted micro-transit program in the cities of Passaic and Clifton. It's basically an on-demand bus service, much like Uber, for people to move around within a designated pilot zone with low-cost rides to connect to Mass Transit, to food shop, to supplement the great work that our paratransit division is already doing. So in anticipation of that launch next week, I've met Agdag here, our Division Director of the Paratransit Department, to give a little presentation on what's being launched next week. We also have Shirley Force, our Department Director for the Department of Senior Services. This is House Hunter, so thank you, Shirley, for all your hard work.
First off, I'd like to thank the team that helped in the process of making this happen. We can have weekly meetings on making this happen. We were even able to move the timeline ahead. We were able to move the timeline ahead, and all of that was thanks to support from the County Administrator, Jordan Mark Seaman, Lizzy Reed, as well as Executive Director Shirley Force, the Via Transportation Team, the vendor, and our stakeholders in the cities of Clifton and Passaic. So I'm excited to provide a summary and introduction to what this micro-transit program is and the pilots and what we're kind of pursuing and the future of.
So the Passaic County Move, first off, is the branding. Move stands for Mobility, Opportunity, Versatility, and Equality. That highlights the values of this program and what we're looking to provide to residents of the county with this on-demand ride-share micro-transit pilot program. So the program summary, we are looking to have this program operating Monday to Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The program is going to have a total of 10 active vehicles in service on the road. Seven of them are going to be standard vehicles, they are going to be minivans. Three of them are going to be wheelchair-accessible vehicles to also assist residents who do require a wheelchair-accessible vehicle, and two of the vehicles will be reserved vehicles so that in case there's any issue, they will always have vehicles on hand to put out onto the road. We're looking at a service fare of only $1.80 per trip. So this is part of that low fare effort. It's quite accessible. The service fare will essentially, in case there are groups, will apply to all of them, so $1.80 per trip or per person to anywhere in the service area. It's not based on destination, it's not based on time, it is based on a fixed fare per trip. The eligibility we're looking at is the general public in the service area. We are emphasizing this program to various communities, but it is going to be set up to the general public as well, where people will be able to request the trips as long as they have the app or as long as they call in, and they are located within the service area. Additionally, to make that added convenience, not only can they use the app, there is going to be a phone line that they can reach for dispatch, which will allow them to call in in the case they don't want to utilize the app, which makes it more accessible to individuals that, you know, don't want to bother with the phone or the apps or technology like that. As well as the phone support, we'll have multilingual English and Spanish. Additional languages are possible. We do have a lot of flexibility in terms of what additional features we can put in, but considering the large Spanish population in the county, we believe this will increase the accessibility to communities that are outside of the English-speaking communities. The service area, to clarify on this one, because this is important to the program, the service area encompasses all of Clifton, all of Passaic, and I do want to highlight the Four Seasons community simply because we had a situation where the Clifton border kind of cut that community in half in terms of availability, which didn't make any sense to leave the other half of it out. So to make sure that everywhere was included, we included the entirety of that community. And that's also why if anyone was involved or had information previously about this program when we first went out to proposal, you'll notice that this is different from the originally proposed service area, which was a little harder to explain. It was more of a blob between Clifton and Passaic, but not all of it. Now it is all of Clifton, all of Passaic, very easy to explain it, and it increases the areas that residents and anyone in the area can transport to. There are 10 permanent destinations that will be included on the app. These are areas that we have provided. We do have the ability to change it, but the idea is to provide 10 locations that are important to the county and its county residents for simplicity, so that anyone who opens the app can easily pick from a list of locations that they want to travel to. So we have the Allwood Park and Ride, Stop and Shop in Clifton, Lester Herschaff Senior Center, Clifton Train Station, Weasel Brook Park, Shop Ride of Passaic, Passaic Main Ave Bus Terminal, Dundee Island Park, Passaic Train Station, and Delawareana Train Station. Outside of this, there are an ability to provide temporary locations, whether it's some kind of event or promotion, and riders will be able to create their own favorited locations as well so that they can have that convenience. But we wanted to highlight this program's access to the parks for recreation for families, to shopping groceries, so they can probably purchase groceries, as well as importantly, transit. One of the areas we're emphasizing with this program, as well as the first and last mile, to increase utilization of the transit stations, the bus stops, the bus terminal, giving convenience to commuters who utilize fixed route transit that New Jersey Transit provides. The program does not have an out-of-zone coverage. I know early on, there was that component, but when we decided to expand to all of Clifton and all of Passaic, we currently don't have that component, so all of the transportation will occur in the service area. So anyone geographically in the area can schedule a trip to anywhere inside the area. It is corner to corner for most riders. However, there is door-to-door available upon request. The door-to-door will be for the wheelchair-accessible vehicles, so it will not inconvenience anyone that requires the wheelchair-accessible vehicles. They will come to their door and assist them onto the vehicle and out of the vehicle into the locations that they are going to, which is an added convenience as part of the program. The program branding, we have the designs on the apps to reflect the program, so it's easily identifiable. And we also do have an image here of the vehicle. I do believe the vehicles have been delivered to Clifton Skate Zone where they will be based, but they pretty much will look like this, which will allow for identification of the vehicles on the roads. So people will be able to see that it is part of the Passaic County Move program as the vehicles are operating and providing transportation to the service area. The focus of this program is, as I mentioned, a heavy emphasis on increasing access and mobility for transportation disadvantaged populations. There is sizable populations in Clifton and Passaic who don't have constant access to vehicles, who don't own vehicles, or who don't have easy access to the fixed routes because maybe the stop is too far for them to walk conveniently. So the goal is to be able to provide a program that's low fare, that they will be able to utilize to get to those locations that they need to get to, and also to supplement our paratransit program because they will be able to operate hours beyond our current program operates, and it will allow flexibility for people to schedule these trips as needed. Another goal, as I mentioned, first and last mile, is increasing access to New Jersey Transit's train stations. There are three train stations located in the service area along the main line. That is the Clifton Station, the Passaic Station, and Delawareana Station, which people will be able to utilize to get there. But additionally, there's also 18 bus routes within the service area alone. So just those two municipalities, we have 18 bus routes that crisscross the area, and this program will help anyone that needs to get access to those bus stops or the bus terminal to be able to get on these buses. Many of them are local, many of them also take people to New York City, as well as Newark and various other locations. So this will really increase people's ability to travel, not just within the service area, but also to destinations outside the service area. And they will also have the, you know, the peace of mind knowing that as long as they return within the service hours, they'll have a ride back to their homes as part of that last mile process. The program itself, we are putting considerable effort in the marketing and promotion of it as well through the vendor's assistance. We are looking at signage at the New Jersey Transit stations. I've made contact with a point of contact at New Jersey Transit, who will be speaking with the vendor's team in regards to putting up actual signage at those stations. And we are also going to be identifying community sites where we can drop off brochures, pamphlets, and introduce the program. I've already had some requests from various community organizations who are interested in learning more about the program, who will be receiving these brochures. Naturally, we will also be promoting this on social media, but separate from those promotions, we also have a couple of tools as part of the program. First one is a launch onboarding incentive. So we are looking at a free month of trips to get people to become familiarized with the program, to start utilizing the program as we are launching the program and getting people to utilize it. On top of that, there's also the added convenience factor of being able to purchase passes so that anyone who expects to utilize the program routinely, they will be able to purchase these passes, which will also increase their utilization rate. And then the vendor also has a feature in the tool where in the case that someone downloads the app but does not utilize it, there are incentives that will be provided to encourage inactive users, but this will only be on the initial setup so that they utilize it and they are encouraged to start, you know, purchasing trips and using the program. Pretty straightforward presentation on the program. Essentially, the gist of it that we're hoping for is that this will give, this pilot program will allow us to identify the demands, allow us to tweak on the program, and then also look to see if there's a possibility of making expansion of this program so further county residents can utilize it.
Okay. Nice presentation, by the way. You indicated that you service the Four Seasons communities?
Yeah.
So the Four Seasons in Clifton-Woodland Park is interesting because it's about maybe 130 some odd units in Clifton, and there's 600 units in Woodland Park. Are you saying that the 600 folks in Woodland Park would be able to take advantage of this program?
Yes, they will be able to utilize this program. Like I said, we didn't want it to have where it's cut off.
Right, right.
Yeah. We didn't want it to be where it's cut off because that would seem a little, you know, illogical that, you know, the Clifton side of the community can use it but not the Woodland Park, even though it's one area. So we decided to incorporate the entire community so we don't have that kind of situation. And like I said, that was also what motivated us to expand the service area to the borders of Clifton and Passaic, so we didn't have that kind of situation with that original service area that was, like I said, a bit more of a blob and was cutting places apart. Thank you.
Just very impressive. I have said, congratulate you. Congratulate everyone who's involved in that. Wes Milford, nothing for Wes Milford?
Well, this program, this program right now, but I will say for Wes Milford, I am working on a 5311 grant.
Leave it alone.
But I have good news. Wes Milford, I am working on a 5311 federal grant to have transportation options available to the areas identified as rural communities of Passaic County, which includes Wes Milford, Ringwood, and Wanacue as well.
Very impressive. Congratulations.
Excellent job by you and your team. This really solves one of the challenges in transit, which is what you identified, and you called it, what's called in sort of our line of work, which is the first mile, last mile problem. It's the drive from home to the train station that becomes the barrier that most people say, eh, I'll just stay in the car. And the fact that you've got this set of stops that includes four train stations, two shop rides, you know, bus connectivity as well, is really terrific for that first mile, last mile piece of it. And I appreciate that when we talked about the Four Seasons situation, that we were able to expand that footprint so that the Woodland Park portion wasn't left out. But this is terrific. I hope people take advantage of it, and I hope as a result, people are using more transit and using their cars less. Thank you.
Commissioner, and I would agree that it makes sense, first and last mile, because we have those 18 routes, and a lot of them do service various areas within Passaic County, including areas like Willowbrook Mall and other locations. So being able to get people out there also benefits Passaic County as a whole.
I also want to thank Shirley Force for her involvement in this program. It sounds like something that you got involved in very quickly, and great job.
The only other thing I'd want to note is, we were able to get this program off the ground based off a state appropriation that Assemblyman Gary Shear was able to secure for the county in the amount of $750,000. So, you know, thank you to him for his advocacy for the county down in Trenton and securing these funds that allow us to launch this very exciting program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Director. Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on, I just want to acknowledge the attendance of School Board Commissioner of Passaic, Christine Sherratt. Thank you for coming. Good to see you. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Bartlett, I think you have one?
Yeah, actually, Director, I wanted to acknowledge you and let folks know, for those of us who had the privilege of attending the NJAC, New Jersey Association of Counties convention last week, you were inducted into the County Commissioner Hall of Fame. You kept your remarks short.
Yes, I did.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Duffy was also inducted in absentia for 20 years of service.
His age was even shorter.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. And as they always do, our team at Passaic County Tech made us proud. Everyone, every, the last day of every NJAC is a competition and a opportunity for the different culinary programs from technical, county technical schools across our state to come together and show what they can do. And Passaic County VoTech, the culinary team up there, won the silver medal in the People's Choice Awards. And each of these medals, gold, silver, and bronze, come with scholarships, $1,250, $750, and $500. But the silver medal for People's Choice Awards, for their chicken and cheese empanadas with chicharrón tostones, don't know how I did pronouncing that, but Orlando's not here, so let's not worry about it. Gold medal, good? Okay, got a seal of approval. Gold medal station display from the NJAC judges, and the professional chefs awards, a silver medal for food presentation. So great work to our students from Tech. That's, I think, I, I never was that good at math, but I think that's $2,750 in scholarships from NJAC for the students up there at Tech. And congratulations to our two elder statesmen here for their permanent induction into that Hall of Fame. I also want to acknowledge, speaking of the elderly, that this month is Older Americans.
Older Americans. That's what he said.
That this month, May 2025, is Older Americans Month in New Jersey. And I do want to acknowledge that the governor recognized that with a proclamation on behalf of the 2.2 million New Jerseians who are aged 60 and older, and to the value that all older adults bring to our communities in our state. So to anybody in that category, have a great month of May. And speaking of the month of May, join us two weeks from today, we're going to celebrate Asian Pacific American and Native Hawaiian Heritage Month, right here in Passaic County.
All right. Thank you. Well, I did, do want to acknowledge, and thank you, John, for bringing that up, that, and I'm sure Terry would agree with me, saying that, I said that I share the award of the 20-year service with all the department heads here. We've been fortunate, Terry and I, being the elder statesmen here. We've been fortunate through the years, through the 20, or 21st year, to have a great team of department heads, great employees. As I mentioned, we have folks here that truly and honestly care about the residents of Passaic County. And under the leadership of our administration, currently Matt Jordan and prior, Tori DeNover, we've gotten a lot done, we're able to get a lot done to, to support and to facilitate all the residents in Passaic County. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your involvement in making this happen. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
I think I should say something.
Go, go ahead.
It's all you. I've admired you for 21 years.
Here we go.
I want to also thank everyone involved, that, you know, next, as you, everyone knows, we're not running again, so it's the end of this chapter, at least in my life, and I'm sure my little friend there. But we've accomplished a lot, we really have. And it's been, a couple people have changed and back and forth, and Bruce, you've been around for longer. But I'm proud of all the accomplishments we've had, but we didn't do it alone. And we didn't, we, together was a team, and you were a part of the team, very much a part of the team. You're the ones who make us look good, and we've accomplished a lot through your efforts. I just want to thank you for that. I've had a grand time, it's a couple more, I just said to Pat, how many more meetings do we have left?
14.
Yeah, you was right on it.
Who's counting?
Yeah, but we're not counting. No, I, I've had a grand time, I really have, you know. Got to put some humor in life, otherwise we'll all be crying. But I want to thank you all, and I want to thank the, the general public that's been supporting us for so long. That being said, God's been very good to me. Thank you.
Okay, no communications, I'll need a motion, open the public portion of the meeting?
Move.
Second. Second by Bartlet.
Second.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step forward to the podium there. And you have three minutes, and also remember that anything that you say is a matter of public record.
It's my favorite part, seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second. Moved by Duffy, second by DeVore. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Consent agenda, I'm removing item 57. So I need a motion from, for, there's no next order, is there?
No next order.
I need a motion for L1 to L56.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Duffy, second by Lazar. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Under new business ordinance number 2025-04.
Bond ordinance to authorize the partial funding of the county of Passaic portion of the cost of the construction of a parking garage for the vocational school in the county of Passaic, in, by, and the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $4,500,000 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
A motion to approve bond ordinance 2025-04, in first reading.
Move it.
Second. By Lazar, second by Bartlet.
This is first read. Sorry.
Moved by Lazar, second by Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Stain.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Motion on personnel. Move the personnel. Moved by Bartlet.
Second.
Second by Lazar. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Need a motion on the bills? Move the bills.
Second.
Second by Lazar. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
By Duffy, second by Lazar.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.